Good evening, everybody. It is June 16th, and it's 5:30 in the evening, and we're having this additional Board of Selectmen meetings this evening to do two things. One, discuss the budget and the changes that we've had to make, and two, to do our reorganization. Because last weekend was the election, and I want to congratulate Andrew Goodrich in becoming a new selectman. Welcome aboard. We all look forward to working with you, and it was a great campaign, and, you know, pretty good turnout considering, and a good race between you and RJ, and congratulations for winning. So, first meeting here, it'll be a short one, a little bit of heavy lifting, but certainly won't go into the wee hours that sometimes we get to. Also, just the other election results, Janice Lombom won the contested seat for the school committee as well. Good. So, that being said, we're still meeting per Governor Baker's Declaration on Public Health Emergencies protocol, and I'm going to just go through how you can participate in the town, in the meeting, the numbers to call, the codes to push to participate. But first, I'll call the meeting to order.
Don't move.
Second, my Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gonna unanimous. Okay, now, we are in session. So, to participate this evening, there's three phone numbers that you can call. The numbers are 425-436-6308, 425-436-6338, and 425-436-6300. Once you get on, Michelle is in the back, and she's playing the operator this evening. If you push the code 817-651-POUND, then you'll be involved in conversation, and then we'll have an open period where you can ask questions. Great. We're going to just reorganize at the end of the meeting instead of the beginning of the meeting, to end on a good note, and we will start with the town administrator's report.
So, a few things. Again, last two days, no new COVID cases in Situate, not at the nursing homes, so we're on a good roll. Again, if we were expecting a bounce for Memorial Day, we should start seeing it right around this time, but we have not, so Situate's doing a good job. Keep up the good work, and hopefully those numbers will continue to trend down. Phase two started Monday. Restaurants, we could go Monday, restaurants are back open. We did have Front Street closed Friday and Saturday, Saturday and Sunday night last weekend. This weekend, it'll be Thursday, 4 to 8, Friday, 4 to 8, Friday, 4 to 10, Saturday, 4 to 10, and Sunday, 1 to 8, and that is for the galley right now. Reva has expressed interest in having outside seating, but we have not received their plan yet, so if they turn that in sometime tomorrow, we would then close from Otis to Allen, but that would start on Friday night, because we'll need a day to get together, meet with police, fire, and everybody, get that all set up. So, whenever we hear from them, we can then do that next round of closing. I did go to the Hibernian. They're a good month out from opening. They still have a lot of work to do, and we're going to get the same information from Salt at some point. When we meet with Reva, we'll find out what Salt's plan is. Otherwise, I was down there Saturday and Sunday. Lots of people walking around, pretty much everybody had masks on. I think most people like it. They think it's going pretty well. The other businesses down there, if you want to put stuff out front, just make sure people can get by, and the chandelier cap accessible on the sidewalks, and you can participate in this also. We're just trying to really drive foot traffic down there, not only to help the business, the restaurants, but to help the rest of the businesses down there, because the restaurants are a big draw, especially in the summertime.
Before you go, Karen, is Situate local doing anything above and beyond that down there, or is it just the advertising to get people out?
Yeah, so, for this, for the harbor closure, they're just pushing the news out and, just trying to spread the word through the chambers.
And the whole premise is to kind of have the first Friday events happening over the whole weekend, and get people out there, let the retail stores involve, get involved as well as the restaurants, so. And I was down there, too. It looked like a great, great response. People love being out. The feedback that I'm getting, and it looks like everybody's getting, is positive, so kudos to getting that out there.
I think there's a real pent-up demand for people to just get out and go do something, so.
Right.
It was good. According to Lieutenant Governor today, phase 2A could start next week, and that would be limited restaurant interiors being open, limited capacity. We don't have any guidance on what that would look like, how much the capacity would be, whether it would be a percentage or what, based upon your occupancy, but we are looking forward to that. And phase 3 would start the 29th of June, if everything keeps going in the right direction, and that's based on every three weeks going to a different phase. Library's doing their pickups and drop-offs. Drop-off is any day in the drop box. Pickup's Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 10 to 3. This is still limited to the Situate library catalog, because the Old Colony service is not up and running yet, sharing books back and forth, but if we have a book, and it's in our library, you can go in and sign it out and pick it up Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday between 10 and 3. We are working on the library opening. Again, we're still looking for some more clarification from the state on that, and the other issue really for the library opening is no one wants to be the only library open on the South Shore. We're afraid of the crowds, so we're having conversations with the other towns to see when they're going to be opening their libraries, but, you know, we'd like to get the library open, at least on a limited basis, so people can start using that service. The town hall staff is back. Everybody was back this week. We are open to visitors right now by appointment. Call the appropriate department, make an appointment. You can come in and meet with them when you get here. Call, they will come and let you in. You will need to wear a mask and do appropriate social distancing. Those services that can be done online, we request that you still do those online. You don't need an appointment to come in and get a beach stick, you can still do that online, so we want to drive those online services to be online, and then we are planning, as you can see, we're making the physical changes in the building. We are planning on getting the building ready to reopen, again, depending upon the guidelines that we get from the governor, but as a target date, if we did go into phase 3 on the 29th of June, then we would probably be opening the town hall to the public the 6th of July, right after the 4th of July. I figured a lot of people are off that week in the town hall anyways, leading up to the 4th, so we would do it right after the 4th of July. Again, that's going to be dependent upon the numbers. Town meeting is the 27th at the football stadium. We're doing it at 9:00 AM to try to avoid the heat of the day and the mosquitoes at night. We'll be considering the budget and the consent agendas. My recommendation is all of those things of an immediate nature, budgetary nature, get taken up. Your meeting tonight, the advisory board's meeting tomorrow night, once you've taken your votes, then we will push that information out through our website to people, so they can look at what the plan is for town meeting, what the budget's going to look at. I have drafted a town meeting plan for people. It's being reviewed by the pertinent department heads right now. That will also go out by the end of the week, so people will know what to do when they get there, where to go, how it's going to look, and all that information. So, the plan is to have everything out by the weekend, so people have at least a good week to digest it and ask any questions that they might have prior to town meeting. Another reminder from our water department, to conserve water. We are using a lot of water. There will be a reverse 911 call going out tomorrow. Mayor, the email last week did last week, just reminding people. Kevin and I were looking at a couple things today, and it was 10:30 in the morning, and driving down the street, sprinklers on, sprinklers on, sprinklers on. You know, you're not allowed to water between 9 and 5, whether it's your day or not, so we're going to send that reminder out tomorrow through the reverse 911. The water department employees have been going out and giving warnings right now to people who are in violation, but if the, if the usage continues, then those warnings will have to switch to violation, so the fines are $100 a day.
Can I just make a comment?
No.
I know you can't hear me. I just want to remind residents that this is our normal water conservation restrictions, the policy that's been in effect for years. So, it's nothing new, and it's really important, and it was all created as a means to continue to conserve. So, I think the language is important to share, because I don't want to alarm people, even though usage is up. I just want to make sure that folks know this is what we are supposed to do every year.
Right, and Kevin, say, he can correct me. The first series of water restrictions that we always have are state restrictions, based on water usage in the basin that we belong to, and then as our reservoir draws down, the town of Situate can have further restrictions based upon our actual water supply. So, right now, all the towns around us basically have the same restrictions about limited outside watering and things like that, and then Situate would have its own tied around the reservoir, how much water's in the reservoir, so that's where we're at right now. While we're on water, brown water, the water department has not received any recent brown water complaints. That's good, despite the increases in flows and the recent fire at Go Green. We're not saying we've won the battle against brown water. This, the 4th of July is going to be the big weekend, but we want to remind people, if you have brown water, please let us know, because it's an important data point for us, and we can get out and then address whatever's causing that. So, if you have brown water, call the water department, 781-545-8735. Email brownwater@situateMA.gov, and you go to the town website, and there's a water quality survey that you can check off, and we put the link on the front page.
Yeah, air news.
So, under the news, there's a link that will show you all this information, but we want you to tell us if you have brown water, because then we can go out and look at what's causing the problem in that particular area, and make arrangements to flush and do whatever we have to do. So, the good news is, we haven't gotten a lot of complaints, even with some things that really increased our water usage, which would normally cause calls, like the fire at Go Green, that would normally cause brown water calls, but the 4th of July weekend is, and that week is our big week, and we'll see what's going to happen. Then the next big project that we have is the replacement of the 2-inch mains around town, and that probably starts sometime in August.
Probably late July, early August, yeah.
We'll start those projects to replace those small lines that cause localized brown water in those neighborhoods, and get a lot of those cleaned up, and that's, that's the next big step, along with the green sand filter, which we started clearing up on Tac Factory Park. The truck was up there today, starting to clear that out, so that construction is going to start, too. So, that's all I have for this week. Anybody have any questions?
Question?
I'm good, thanks.
Karen?
Just a quick, can you give us an update on how the Go Green cleanup is going, speaking of Go Green?
He's making progress. I'm trying to just find a time we can all get on there from the team this week and meet with him and see where he is and what the plan is going forward.
Okay.
But he has made progress getting it cleaned up. Not as much as I'd like, but it's way better than it was.
Good, okay.
Andrew, any questions?
Yeah. The location of those two, those two mains that you're fixing?
Multiple, Kev. I know Full Road is one. Let me get you the list.
It's a lot of 2-inch lines we have. We're also doing neighborhood off the backside here, way off Countryway, because it's a small neighborhood that we're doing that we know has problematic, where it's broken like seven times in the past year that we're going to be doing some replacements. But a lot of it is, we have a lot of streets, like, for example, Michelle's street, street ends, and there's not a hydrant on the last 800 feet of our road, so we can't flush it in any way to get any brown or buildup or anything else out of there, so we're going to add hydrants, blow off, and also we can do a lot of that.
We can send you a list of what's on the plan.
Usually give a heads up to the people before you...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We're saying the end of Ju-, end of July, beginning of August, because I don't think it's gone to bid yet, right?
No, it hasn't gone to bid yet.
We'll give them plenty of time, so they know, yeah. Otherwise, it causes problems.
Is that it? Only thing to mention there, if you do send an email or call in, make sure you give us your address. Again, they've got a whole grid of the town where they're marking where the calls are coming from, and that allows them to analyze the problems a little bit better. Okay, that's all I have. Why don't we go to the first scheduled item of 545, which is discuss the CARES Act relief and receipt of the Commonwealth Relief Funds of $139,000.
So, this is the first reimbursement we've gotten from the CARES fund, and this is being overseen by Plymouth County. Plymouth County got about $90 million in CARES monies for the cities and towns. Over $2 million of that would be Situate's share, based on the county population and proportion. Our first one was $139,000. The commissioners came on Friday, brought us a check. It was a small one, they didn't give us a big one. They gave us a small one. You see the breakdown, cleaning supplies, cleaning equipment, third-party cleaning, a lot of it on PPEs, and then overtime for public safety. The overtime for public safety is a lot of different things, but included in that would be if someone suspected they had COVID and was out, we would have to bring people in on overtime to cover, and that's eligible under the CARES Act. We've just signed a second one of $56,000, and we will continue to do these. I was talking tomorrow earlier, the schools are getting their requirements now for what the fall's going to look like, so we expect to have some very large purchases for PPE for the schools, if they're going to be back in the fall. So, I'm pretty sure we're going to spend close to what we got to spend here, but we have until December. Right now, we're also ordering a lot of the cleaning supplies they seem to be in all of a sudden, where we couldn't get them before, so a lot of the hand sanitizer, stuff like that, we are stocking up on at this point also. But I did want to point out that Tom O'Brien, the Plymouth County Treasurer, made it a point to call me and to mention on Friday that the application put in by the town of Situate was the best and most complete application that they received from any town in the county. It was right, there were no problems, there were no questions, so congratulations to Nancy who submitted it, and really to the entire staff who do a really good job of tracking what is COVID and why it's COVID. So, I have every confidence that we're going to get every penny that we're supposed to get. That's just the first installment. Again, we just signed a second one for $56,000, and those will continue as long as we have COVID-related expenses that we have to file.
And Nancy, did they pay that pretty promptly?
Yeah, probably within two weeks.
So, that was one of the concerns. So, we filled the forms out right, we got paid the full amount, and we got paid pretty quickly, so that's great. Did you get any information from them, what the other communities are getting?
Now, it should be on their website, which is publiccountycares.com, even after we had been informed that we had, they had processed our claim, it hadn't been posted to it, but as far as I know, they've only processed three claims so far.
The biggest one that I'm aware of is Moshfield, and Moshfield had about $800,000, Nancy?
Million, I believe.
But $800 was just school-related costs for computers and Chromebooks and things like that, to go from in-school learning to remote learning.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is, Nancy, and you're probably doing this anyways, if you can just look and see what other people are claiming, yeah, and make sure that we're not missing out on if our school bought computers also, that we're not getting reimbursed.
They're on order.
They're on order.
They are, okay.
They already had a lot. They didn't need a big purchase to go to remote learning, but they've just ordered, I think, 90 more, somewhere in that range.
Did they order any hotspots?
They had a technology package, Chromebooks were just part of it. I haven't seen the entire scope of it.
Great. Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done.
Patrick came in, right, and I think Nancy, you were there to receive the check?
Yes, there's only two of them loaded on our website right now, Situate, Maricopa.
Okay, so the next discussion is discussion vote on special town meeting, the annual and the special town meeting. I'll give a little bit of background on this. We did the whole budget process, as many of you know, and made some assumptions on some revenue sources that we believe are going to change. So, we had state aid increasing at about 8% based on the governor's budget, and now we feel that that's probably unrealistic. Financial forecasting committee got together a couple of times. Nancy, when was the two meetings ago in the library, where we had all the, all the people there from the school and all the different departments, and we really discussed every line item, revenue source, and we decided to make some adjustments, and we felt that reducing the state aid dollar amount by 10% over last year's number was a prudent decision to make, and then there were probably three or four other expense lines that we adjusted one way or the other. Not a ton, but, but a little bit here or there for insurance, or comp, or unemployment and what have you. That being said, Nancy went in all the numbers, crunched them into our spreadsheets again, and came up with some new numbers for both us and the school. The school met last night and went over their changes to the school committee, and now we're going to do the same here. Jim and Nancy have proposed some, some changes, which we'll let them go over, and then there's capital items and stuff that go along with this as well. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think the capital's first.
Sure.
So, capital, again, we went through all the capital submissions. My first thought was that, given the uncertain economy, we might want to make deeper cuts in capital, but the problem with that is, you know, to use the term, it's kicking the proverbial can down the road, and our can's big enough as it is. Plus, we have the new facility study coming on that will add more to the capital, so I think it's important that we keep up with our capital, and these are all things that if we don't do them now, we will have to do them later, they're just going to want the next year's plan, then they're going to cost more money. But we did drop some things, some of the things on here. We're recommending dropping the Egypt-Berm project for $1 million. That has already gone out to bid. We use current funds for that from fiscal '19, so that is not, no longer required, so that project has the money, we got our fee for reimbursement. The Four Shore repairs for $12 million for Third Cliff, that is now tied up in more permitting tape. CZM, I think, is now involved.
We need modeling with them.
So, we have the entire alphabet of state and federal agencies involved down there. It's going to take a while, the modeling's going to take some time, so we don't need to do that at this point. We already have the money for the design and the modeling, so that will come off, and that's a $12 million project. The minor beach parking lot, we are recommending coming off at this time for a couple of reasons. One, our beach revenues are lagging a little bit this year. Two, we do have additional COVID-related expenses that we will have to bear out of that account. We'll apply for reimbursement, but still, we've got to come up with the money. And three, obviously, if we pass this in June, we are not going to close the minor beach parking lot in July and pave it, so the idea is here, this can wait, we'll see what happens with our revenues. We can always put it back on in the fall for a spring project and have it done next year for the beach season, but at this point, we wouldn't do it.
Is that the regular parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
The final one is the 1983 tractor yard jockey at the transfer station, and again, the transfer station enterprise account is lagging right now, so Nancy and I do not recommend that we use retained earnings for a capital project, because our revenue is not really covering our expenses at this point. We may need to use the retained earnings to cover part of the budget. Those are the capital revisions, amendments that we are asking the board to approve.
Great. Can you just tell us what, what the financial impact of that is? Is it going to free up free cash?
No.
Is it just going to lower the interest?
It really doesn't free up anything. The borrowing articles wouldn't have any financial impact on 2021, even if we borrowed, the first payment wouldn't probably be to 2022. The minor beach parking lot is out of beach revolving, and the truck at the transfer station is out of transfer revolving, so it doesn't free up any cash at all.
Okay. Any questions from board?
No.
Karen?
No. Good.
Kevin, Nancy, anything to add?
Because it's Marcus Law, the piston on the yard jockey went today.
Of course it did.
It's being evaluated for care. So, if you see that the yard jockey disappeared, it's because it's...
They knew we were going to be talking about it tonight.
Thought we could get another two years out of it.
And the capital budget committee voted 4 to 1?
In favor of the... And the dissenting vote was because of the minor beach parking lot. They were concerned it be delayed, but they understood the reason why it was delayed. They just didn't agree with it.
So, Kevin, this is the one we redrew the lines for, right? We're restriping it?
No, we already did that project. The minor beach parking lot is completely dispossessed.
The second one or the first?
First one. We're going to raise it, and then there's a lot of additional property over there that people have sheds on and everything else that we can cover and use properly, additional parking.
Have those notices already been...
Talks about doing that.
No, we haven't done any. We just, we surveyed it, found out the areas, we staked it out, secured it, without subject to dispossession, which we're in this valley, which we're not anyways. There was a boat there, and then we had a couple of other things pulled out, delayed by people. There's a significant amount of land that's owned by the town.
So, this is going to repave it?
Yes, we already went through conservation, it adds new drainage to it, repave it, the whole night, yeah.
I thought we did that like three or four years ago, that we went back in there, and we, we tried to get five or six more spaces in there.
That was Glades Road up on the right, wasn't it?
No, Glades Road down the side of Glades.
Excuse me.
The secondary parking lot, depressed with gravel and stone dust, brought that up today. In Egypt, we did Amrock. Amrock, we added...
Oh, I know, I know the beach, yeah. I thought we did something with that one, though, but, okay, maybe we just talked about it.
There was a canoe ramp, I think, that was out of my voice.
All right, so if there's no questions, do we have to...
We need to vote on the new number?
Vote separately?
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the capital improvement plan be adjusted to reflect the following sums of money totaling $8,284,898.
Second?
Second, my Ms. Canfield, further discussion. Michelle, can we open this up to questions?
Q and A session has started.
Is there anyone on the line? If anyone has a question regarding the capital plan, hit star 1, I believe it is?
Star 6.
Star 6. Okay. Well, any questions?
Q and A session is over.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Gonna unanimous. Five to zero. Okay, so the next piece is going to be the actual budget.
So, as you talked about earlier, Tony, we did a budget way back, a lifetime ago, it seems like. We got significant additional funding from the New Education Reform Act that the legislature passed. I think it was another $600,000 that we got in savings assumptions. And we built our budget, and the advisory board approved it, and the selectmen approved it, and COVID-19 hit. At this point, the latest number I've seen for the state budget, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation is projecting that the state budget will be $6.6 billion less than what the governor filed back in January. That's a significant number. They do not have a consensus yet, so normally in December, the leading economists, Mass Taxpayers Foundation, House Ways and Means, Senate Ways and Means get together, and they come to a consensus on what the number's going to be for the budget, and then they can split it up any way they want. They have not come to that consensus yet. I can tell you, in 25 years of doing this, this is the latest, I have not gotten something from the state legislature saying, "Plan on this." Even if it's not a number, it's plan on 10, plan on 15. We've, we've gotten no, no guidance. On my talks weekly with our other managers, 10% right now seems to be a 10% reduction in state aid from the current year levels, seems to be the consensus, with it trending higher, but no one seems to know what that trending higher is going to be. And really, the key is going to be, does the federal government either reposition the current CARES Act, which is only for COVID-related expenses, and allow it to be used for COVID-related revenue loss, or the federal government passes something along the lines of the HEROES Act, which is passed the House, which has, I want to say, some of the neighborhood, $900 billion to a trillion dollars for state and local governments to assist the COVID-19 recession problem. I gotta think they're going to do something. At the risk of sounding crass, it's an election year, I gotta think they're going to do something. We are seeing a rebound, at least in the general economy of the unemployment numbers seem to come back a little bit, surprised a lot of people, but without some sort of relief for states and municipalities, we are the next round of layoffs. Waymouth sent out over 100 layoff notices to their school department last week. Multiple towns around here have sent out layoff notices to their employees in their school. So, without some help from somebody, we're the next round of layoffs, and those unemployment numbers are going to go right back, right back on the harbor. But 10% seems to be kind of the consensus, I'm comfortable with that. Again, it could go higher, we might be back, but I think we start at 10% and see where the numbers go from there, and we can react to that. So, what we did, the total is about 1.5 million, roughly, in Situate, 2/3 is the school department, 1/3 is the town, so we had to come up with about a half million. The first thing we did, when we got the additional state aid, and we got the additional new growth on our tax rate, and we certified that, we restored 373,000 in cuts that I had made in my budget recommendation. Those were the first things that came out, you have a list of those there. And then we went back, and we went through the rest of our budgets, and what we're recommending to get from the 373 to close to the 500 that we talked about, uh, the vacant, the community development director is currently vacant, uh, we would leave that vacant until January. Um, the social service director, Laura Minia's position is still vacant, we had a hard time even getting decent applicants for that. Uh, Bob Clark, the HR director, has now applied to and gotten approval to about eight to 10 different colleges that have, uh, degrees in social work and masters in social work, so he can directly go to their websites. We did that, still not great applicants, so we would recommend postponing that until December or January. Uh, we would, uh, take out a cruiser, then we'll get two cruisers this year instead of three cruisers, and we would eliminate the Sunday hours, the library, also 21121. Part of the rationale for that is we still don't know what the library is even gonna be at this point. Um, and if we eliminated Sunday hours, there's still, we done in Sunday hours in the communities around us, that people still can access library services, so, uh, that's what Nancy and I came up with. Um, there's a large reduction in the economic development budget, that's kind of off-budget because they get a direct money from the meals tax, which we reduced by 50% in our projections, but the economic development committee is part of the same, of all one budget with planning, conservation, so that money is, is kind of fungible across those lines, we could take money from other places if we need to help out the economic development committee. So that's a long way to say we cut a half million dollars from the town's side of the budget spending.
Uh, questions? Karen?
Yeah, Jim, um, when you talk about layoff notices going out from Waymouth, for example, um, is a lot of that contractual?
Statutory.
Are there some contracts where they have to be given a certain amount of notice versus?
Under state law, as I understand it, in the schools, layoff notices are notices of non-renewal, must be given out by the 15th of June.
Okay.
That's why a lot of those have gone out.
And we didn't have.
If they get money back, then they would, they'll just bring those people back.
And we didn't have to do that.
The school department is not at this point. I think they're pursuing some other strategies to get to the number they need to get to.
Well, I think that's good news, that this budget for the town only relates to the two positions that aren't filled.
Well, we have, we have some other positions that aren't filled, that are, that are out there, we use those for savings this year.
Yeah.
We have a couple of police positions that aren't filled, we're not filling those yet because we don't actually have any place to put the people, there's no academies yet. Um, there's a vacancy, at least one in Kevin's department, that we're, we're just gonna wait on the budget vote for, and then if the budget passes, we'll, we'll fill that position because that just leads to overtime problems later. But the budget that we're putting before you, even reducing it by a half million dollars, there is no one walking out the door at this point.
Thank you. Maura?
Um, I, I do have a concern about delaying the social services director position, I know it's been difficult to find qualified candidates, but I would hate to miss out on an opportunity if somebody did come along, um, it's been, um, a big loss to the senior center, um, as well as, I, I would imagine too, to the police department when they need assistance, you know, when they're doing wellness checks, and in this time of COVID, you know, stress levels are up, people are suffering more, and I, I don't, I mean, I'd love to see if we can find $25,000 elsewhere.
Well, I don't, uh, I don't think you'd need the whole 25, because you really wouldn't look for someone until probably August, just 'cause, I know when I graduated from college and didn't have a job, I'm like, I gotta look in the fall. I'm gonna take the summer off, people just did, so you might be filling it September, October, um, so.
I just would.
We could, we could do that after the summer, and then have to find some savings elsewhere if we.
If possible.
If we, if we found someone, we just have to find the savings elsewhere, but I, I wouldn't start looking probably until August.
I get asked about it a lot, so.
So we could do that, and if we're successful, as I said, we'll have to move some stuff around, but depends on when they start, figure it's between $4,000 and $5,000 a month. Plus health insurance.
Andrew? Any questions? Karen?
Um, just, uh, two ques, one question, I agree with, uh, Maura on that, I think that the benefit to the police department is, is great, so I would, you know, uh, if he can cast the net in August, and we'll just see how it goes, I mean, um, I think that that's a really important thing to, to be, not take the gas off of. Um, I just want, I can't remember, on the school assumptions for the budget, um, the first budget, would they, um, did they factor in the, um, increased funding from, uh, the Chapter 70 revisions?
Yes.
They did, and, and that's another thing, we don't know if that's even gonna get delayed or not.
It's not, but they.
School, if Chapter 70 doesn't go to the school, it goes part of the full thing, and we split it.
I mean, it just goes into the mix, but.
I'm sorry, but, yeah, I mean.
We are not going to, I do not see, if the, if the state's gonna make good on giving us more Chapter 70, they're gonna take it out of general government aid, so they'll just zero out that line, because the state budget is 50 billion?
Yeah, no, I guess I meant Chapter 90, is the school, the re, the reformulated budget.
That's Chapter 70.
It is Chapter 70.
You're right.
So, so the two big triads of state aid are Chapter 70 and what's called UGA, Unrestricted General Government Aid. If they're gonna give you this one, they're gonna have to take this one, because $6.6 billion out of 50, 60 billion dollar budget, you say, ah, that's, that's not that much. Take out debt service, take out healthcare, Medicare, Medicaid, take out all that stuff, and now you're taking $6 billion out of $40 billion, suddenly becomes a real big number, and the next big number in the state, after pensions and things, you know, all the things you have to pay, the next big number is us.
Yeah.
I just don't see how they can do it without taking, taking those numbers down, they just, if they can there, they should get a Nobel Prize in Mathematics, because it's gonna be a dance, and I don't know how they're gonna do.
That's all.
Yeah, the only thing, just, you answered my question right there, where you said the budget's 54 billion, so the 6.6 billion cut is about a 12% cut.
Right.
So our number at 10% is probably in the ballpark. Um, I'm really thrilled at the fact that we didn't have to lay anybody off, but as we've talked about this, a layoff does not get us the full amount of money, because we're self-employed for unemployment, so we really don't save much money by, by layoffs. Um, and the school, I think, knows that as well, which is why they're trying to find any way to do it than, than laying people off as well.
We almost have to lay off $2 to get a dollar in savings.
Right.
So we have to, we have to pay back out the unemployment, it's.
Right, so, um, this is great, um, I, I did wanna know, what, what do you think is gonna happen in January that's gonna allow us to, you know, hire, you know, look for these positions, or?
Well, we just, we need to come up with a number, so that's savings, we can put off doing it to January, and then if the budget is what we say it is, we'll have sufficient funds to fill it.
Okay, so you're just looking to readjust, see what the number's actually coming at, because we may have to cut more?
We may have to cut more, yeah.
If it's more than 10%, we may have to, we may be able to replenish some.
There'll be, there'll be, if, if the cut goes deeper, then there's a whole series, do you continue cutting, do you start laying people off, do you look to use some reserves on a minor basis, you know, if you, if your gap is 100,000, you say, well, we'll use reserves. If it's $500,000, I, I don't think you can, because that just completely discombobulates and unbalances your budget forever going forward.
Right.
Until you make that half million dollars up, and we saw that at Norwell, they were using 500, $800,000 in free cash, then we had an override, it was all the stuff you want on the override, plus you had to make that $800,000 up to get back to zero. So it, it really just makes your budget completely unstable and unbalanced going forward, and it's always like that, until you get to some point that you can fill that gap back in.
We get it, we've done it, we've been there as well. Um, the, um, only thing I would like, I agree with Maura and Karen in terms of that social worker position, so I know we're not gonna look until the fall, but if you can kind of get an idea of if we choose to do that, aside from other things, what we would do to make up the, you know, 15, 15, I guess it would be almost 40,000 if we wanted to, because when you hire them, they're, you're with you for the rest of the year also.
Well, you'd get July, August, and probably part of September, so that'd be $12,000 that you'd save, and then you'd have to come up with October, November, December, you'd have to come up with about 20 out of what we're talking about, I think the savings here is?
25.
25, so you'd have to come up with half, I mean.
Yeah, so I guess what we're asking is, find out what other cuts, if we said, no, we want this, find something else, just so we can have that prepared, if that's, if you come across the right candidate, clearly, we don't wanna hire the wrong candidate, but if we get lucky like we did last time, um, we don't wanna.
Yeah, I, and I don't wanna, this is probably gonna come out wrong, excuse my mouth shut, but we can't fill Laura Minia's position, because Laura Minia was unique, what she did was amazing. We're not gonna get that right out of the gate, especially because what we're talking about really are recent graduates. We'll get somebody, but people shouldn't expect Laura Minia-level services right out of the gate, because that's just unrealistic for, for what we're talking about, I mean, she was just amazing what she did, and the way she dealt with people was phenomenal, but.
If you can just get that.
We'll, we'll tell the H.I.L.L. start looking in August to try to fill it sometime in, in September, and then we'll have to have something else in our back pocket, which we'll come up with something.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Uh, Nancy, anything to add? Can we open it up to questions?
Q and A session has started.
Uh, you are now, if you have any questions regarding the budget and the changes we just discussed, please hit star six and tell us your name and address. Okay, Michelle's shaking her head, there's no one on the line, so we will end questions.
Q and A session is over.
And can I have a motion to accept the changes to the budget that Jim just described?
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the revised fiscal 21 budget as presented, which will result in reduction totaling $499,892.
Seconded by Mr. Goodrich, you're in the game.
Yay!
Took Karen four meetings to get there. Um, further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's none, five to zero.
Sorry, who's second is that?
Mr. Goodrich.
Mr. Goodrich.
Okay, good, oh boy.
Get the puck out of the net and hand it over.
Probably on guard there.
Just teasing, Karen. Um, okay, the next topic is CPC adjustments from Article 12.
So this is the, uh, adjustments to the 10% set-asides that are required, the budget article, or the article is based upon assumptions in what the state reimbursement was going to be, uh, I think our assumptions were at 37%, Nancy, uh, which it had been historically with the increase in the registry fees. The new state estimate for the match is 11.2, obviously, that number's gone down significantly, so the 10% set-aside goes down with it. So what these numbers are, uh, these are the new 10% set-asides based on 11.2 match from the state, as opposed to a 37.2 match from the state.
Karen, anything to add?
No.
Appreciate board.
Simple math.
Math.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Is it the 187, or is it the 184? What's the, oh, maybe I copy and paste something. Okay, oh, thank you, Dan.
Sounds like Dan Fennelly. Hi, Dan.
This embodied voice.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan, um, so the change is going to be, what, what do, uh, so we have to make 180, what was it before and what is it gonna be?
Yeah, those are funny, Nancy, I'm just looking them up.
Dan, do you know what it was before and what it's going to be now?
Yes, uh, before, with the 37.2% matching, uh, the estimated revenues were 2.304 million, which resulted with a 10% for 230,438, uh, for each of the housing historic and those o, open space. Uh, the 230, 438 has been reduced to 187,561.
Great.
Uh, for each of those three 10% set-asides, and then the admin cost or expenses went from 57,621 to 46,890.
So we reduce that from 5% to 2.5%?
We've only ever used 2.5%, the maximum is 5%, and, uh, the committee, at least since I've been there, has always felt we didn't need, uh, to go up to a 5%, the 2.5% was more than adequate, uh, for the expenses of the committee.
Great. Any questions for Dan Fennelly, chairman of CPC?
I will mention also, if I could, Tony.
Sure.
Uh, we were also notified there will be a second and third, uh, set-aside, uh, more money that will be coming out, and the, the reason for the reduction from 37 to 11% was based on anticipated lack of revenue due to the pandemic, and what I've seen is, or what I've heard from the CPA, is that, uh, they didn't see the drastic reduction in revenue that they expected, so there may be more money coming.
Sure.
Great.
Let's press on that one.
Okay, well, so we'll be conservative, and, and Dan, is it still allocated by the people that, that are participating at the highest level, get to the next levels? So we're, we're a 3%?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, so Dan, usually, because we assess the full 3%, we get into the second and third round according to the law, but it sounds to me like you're suggesting, are you suggesting that there's gonna be a different two, round two, round three, based on adjusted revenues from the Department of Revenue, so that even communities who aren't full 3%, or is it not clear?
Uh, it, well, I, I, it's not definite, um, I think that's the expectation that I'm seeing from everything that's come out, uh, and the 11% is it for those communities that, that do not get the second and third, uh, round of funding.
Okay, great, so maybe we'll get a little more, because we're.
Sounds like we might.
Full participant. All right, can I have a motion for the adjustment to the CPC?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the reduction in set-asides for the Community Preservation Act, uh, community housing set-aside to be 187,561, historic resources set-aside 1,800, 187,561, open space set-aside 187,561, and administrative expense set-aside of 46,890.
Seconded by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Can we go to Q and A? Hey, Lorraine, is the next meeting at six or seven, 6:30 or seven?
Q and A session has started.
It actually starts at seven, but they need to set up, so quarter up. Be available express.
Um, if there's anyone on the line to have a question about the CPC T adjust, CPC adjustment, give your name and address. Okay, we'll end that. All in favor?
Q and A session is over.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It is unanimous, five to zero, great. Um, the next topic are the year-end transfers.
Ms. Holt will handle those.
Nancy?
Since I have a Board of Select meeting and an Advisory Committee meeting in the same week, and it's time for year-end transfers, I took advantage of it. There are only two transfers in front of you tonight for consideration, and hopefully these will be only two that will come in front of you, um, and these are the types of transfers that we can make at this time of the year, at the close of this little year. Uh, the Public Safety Communications, which is dispatch overtime account, does have a projected deficit, uh, I'm looking to transfer $28,000 into that line item, and the reason they have a deficit is the same problem they've had the last couple of years, they cannot get a full complement of overtime employees and part-time employees, they have significant turnover, plus they did have retirements this year, um, so they're still struggling to backfill just their base shifts and having to build overtime. The second transfer I'm requesting for you is for facilities overtime, uh, that line isn't, has not been well, um, budgeted, it's running around $15,000 a year, but it's only budgeted at approximately 7,500, that was fixed for fiscal 21, so they do have a projected deficit in the overtime budget, and part of the overruns last they had were due to the absence of the director and pick up of overtime, um, a person that was covering for that position, so that was part of it, not all of it.
And that's Board of Health?
Uh, that's facilities, both of them will be funded from the Board of Health payroll line, which has sufficient funds because of the vacancy in Laura Minia's position, the social services manager.
So that's Kevin, Kevin was out, so we had to pay?
We, yes, we incurred additional overtime, that's not all of it, but that's part.
Okay. Um, questions from the board?
Nope. No.
Um, Nancy, one quick question, the, we're only moving $28,000, but it says minus 38?
Because they have retirements, and they, they have overtime positions, they have savings in their regular salaries, so they'll, they'll be turning that.
That'll cover the rest of it.
With the health staff.
Okay.
Again, um, the Board of Health Director did consent to this.
Okay.
They're gonna be ready to budget without discussing.
Important point.
Can we open this up to Q and A?
Q and A session has started.
All right, if you're on the line and have a question about the year-end transfers, hit pound six.
Star six?
Star six.
[laughing].
All right, there's no one there.
Q and A session is over.
We have to move, we have to move.
Can I have a motion?
Move to transfer from the available fiscal 2020 general fund budget line of Board of Health regular salaries for the sum of $38,000 to the facilities department overtime account in the amount of $10,000, and to the public safety communications overtime account in the amount of $28,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 33.
Seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Connelly. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It is unanimous. And now we're going to discuss the consent agenda and the postponement agenda.
So the consent agenda, the postponement agendas would be for the annual town meeting, there are four articles on the special. One of them is the Cedar Point Sewer Project, additional money for that. I don't think under any circumstance that would be in a consent agenda. I think people are going to want to talk about that. To put the other three in a consent agenda, it'll probably take as long to do a consent agenda for three articles, so we'll just devote three articles. So the special town meeting does not have a consent agenda, it will just be, the four articles will be taken up in order, one, two, three, and four. The guidelines on town meeting allow us to have a group bigger than 10, because it's the legislative body. The plan is right now, we will have 200 seats on the field, 100 on either side of the moderator. The selectmen and the finance advisory board will be right around midfield, 200 seats. And then the stands hold, depending on whether you have singles or doubles, between, say, 150 and 200 people. So we'll have seats for almost 400 people, and then if we get more people, there are still areas where people could stand. A regular town meeting for us is in the 300 range, so we should be fine for seats. I'll be out there again on Thursday with Kathy. We're going to meet with the sound people to go over the sound and how that's going to work out. But in accordance with what the preaching is, we want to get people into town meeting and out of town meeting. So yes, there is really a, a heavy consent agenda. To sum it up, really, the articles that I would have for debate on town meeting floor would be Article Three, which is the capital budget, Article Four, which is the budget, and Article Twelve, which is the Community Preservation Act recommendations for spending. Everything else would either be approval by consent or postponement by consent. I don't know if you want to go through them one at a time, Tony.
I guess my first question is, you know, we're going to do the budget, but what the, the five enterprise funds are...
The five enterprise funds are on the consent agenda. Last year, I think we had four out of the five on the consent agenda. We had left one off, I forget, I think it was water. And there were no questions on any of them, and they were not held, so this year, I put them on the consent agenda. Again, if anybody's watching at home, if you wish to take something on the consent agenda and debate it, the moderator will read Article One, Article Two. You just say, "Hold," it comes out of the consent agenda, it goes back into the town meeting for regular debate. But last year, again, we did four out of the five enterprise accounts on the consent agenda. One was left off, and there were really no questions on it, so this year, we put them all on the consent agenda.
I'm just going through them.
So the stabilization excess levy isn't one we do every year, revolving fund limits we do every year, Community Preservation Act reconciliation, that's just closing out old Community Preservation Act articles back to the fund. We put the occupancy tax to reduce that to 4%. That was unanimously supported by the selectmen. I think it was unanimously supported by the advisory board. Really, not a lot of discussion or controversy on it. The Chapter 91 liability, which we do every year, we put on there. We did put the change in town meeting date on there. We think that's...
So, oh, it's just on there twice? Oh, one's the motion.
So one's the article, one's the explanation.
Motion.
Article motion.
Article motion, sorry. The animal control bylaw, because all that's doing is putting it into uniformity with state statute. Additional revolving funds. And really, that's, that's it. Your elected officials' salaries, town reports, is really, it's just stuff that we tend to do every single year, and nobody really has a whole lot of discussion on them. So we put those all in the consent agenda to be passed.
I'm just finishing up, looking at them. If we have any questions, we can...
Just quickly, I mean, actually, I thought you did a great job dividing this up. Do we know when the moderator's meeting is going to be? Has he posted that?
Hasn't posted yet, no.
Okay. And we, one thing that's not, I didn't see, all the system petitions have to stay on? Is that correct?
They're in the postponed agenda?
Oh, they are in the postponed.
We've already heard from one of the, the Right to Farm.
Yep.
He said to take it off, which we cannot do. If the board votes for this, then we'll reach out to the, the other petitioner and say, it's going to be our recommendation that this be postponed, and we'll put it back on at a fall town meeting, and that's the Medicaid for all, I think.
Okay. Sorry I missed that. Thank you.
Maura, any questions?
No.
Karen?
Yeah, in terms of fall meeting, we can have that anytime in the fall. It doesn't, there's no date that...
Yes and no. You generally want to have your fall town meeting before you set your tax rate.
Okay. So in other words, we're not postponing this...
We're going to want to explain why that is, but you want to have it before you set the tax rate.
So to set people's expectations, we would be postponing things until December?
The plan would be, no, we're not postponing them to the summer.
Okay.
If there is a resurgence of coronavirus, and we don't feel that it's...
Right.
...prudent to have a town meeting, because a fall town meeting would necessarily be indoors, unless we wanted to have fire pits for people to stand around. So, you know what? We, Citrus always has a fall town meeting, but if there's a resurgence of coronavirus, I can't say, yes, we will have it, but the intention would be, we have a regular fall town meeting, these will be available for a regular fall town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, any questions? I'm just looking at the, finishing the postponed one. So was the school fine with the sped reserve fund?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we weren't putting any money into it anyways, so we can set it up at a future town meeting, and if we want to set it up and put money in, you can do that at the same time. Just have to vote one before the other.
And the sale of the council on aging and the fire station, anyone have any comments on that? I mean, it's been waiting for 20 years.
I think people are going to want to talk about it.
Yeah.
So, again, if it can wait, because our goal is to get people into town meeting, get our business done, and get out of town meeting, it's not going to change anything if we put that on a future town meeting.
So when we talked about the cell tower leases, we were told that it was time-sensitive that we get it done. Do we have to put those on?
We...
It's still time-sensitive, but they expire in 2021, and we're people that are going to want to talk about it.
We skipped it over until the fall.
Concerned about having that. It's hard to have, you would think that would have a lot of discussion with it.
It had a lot of discussion at the advisory board. A lot. I mean, I think we spent 45 minutes or so on, just on that. So we can put it back on the...
We can get knocked out of the postponed agenda.
Agenda. We can take it out of the postponed and put it back on the to-be debated.
If it's time-sensitive, we should just do it, don't you think?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
It's really going to depend upon the weather, how, how long people are going to want to stand there and go through this stuff. If it's really hot, it's going to get, but...
True, true.
We, we can, we can put it back on, we can put it, take it off the postponement agenda and...
So what about the sewer extension?
The district?
Yeah.
The law changed, it doesn't need a town meeting vote. The selectmen voted. That was taken back from the council.
And we're waiting on Cohasset anyways.
Right. I didn't know if, if Cohasset said yes tomorrow, I'd, I'd want to be ready.
Yeah, we'd pass out and die if Cohasset just said yes tomorrow.
So could I ask a question about the cell tower lease? So the article, I don't have it in front of me, the article is to allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into lease agreement.
A new lease with 25, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember I said, can we move it?
Yeah.
And I was told no. So Jim, just...
But they're not going to. If they got to move, they're going to say, we're just going to take our stuff off and go someplace else. We're not going to pay to move the tower.
The other question that I had is if somebody on the consent agenda, if somebody wants to talk about it, can we move it to the postponed agenda?
That's a really good question.
Why would you?
They want to talk about it, they would just take it off the consent and put it back on the to-be talked about.
No, they pull it off the consent agreement, because they want to talk about it.
Why would you want to postpone it?
Well, same reason we're postponing all this stuff. You know, if there was something that, if we want...
But if it's on the consent agenda, it's something that...
It needs to get done.
We think needs to get passed.
So what if it's on the postponed agenda, and somebody takes it off that and puts it, wants to discuss it, how does that go?
Then they would have to move it, or someone could get up and say, "I moved to postpone Article 59." And then you have a debate about that individually, and you can move on from there. But you'd have to, someone would have to move it, "I moved to postpone it individually," which then sparks debate, really on the motion.
Well, that's what we're...
We were just talking about the other way around. Somebody pulls it off the postponement.
Right. So if I, if I pull Article 59, and there's no Article 59, if I pull Article 59 off the postponed agenda, because I want to debate it, when it comes up, someone could still move, stand up and say, "I moved to postpone Article 59."
Oh, okay.
But there is a debate on it. The question of whether to postpone is now debated, which is, in essence, a debate about the question. Why shouldn't it be postponed? Why should it be postponed? Or whoever moves to take it off the consent would move the article as written, or whatever the motion would be, and then we would debate...
Okay.
...as regular course, that motion.
Sorry, I had to explain that twice.
So just looking at Article 26, and I don't know if I, my paperwork is a little, so this is the reduction of the occupancy tax.
Okay, because there's two of those. One was filed by petition, and one was filed by the Board of Select.
26 is the file, I got you.
The 26 is the petition article. The board filed their own, that is on the consent agenda. You wouldn't pass both of them.
And the South Shore Community Action Donation Request, that's, we haven't spoken to them yet.
This board was not in favor. I don't believe the advisory board was in favor of it either.
It was split.
Close, but...
May I ask a question? Why wouldn't we IP 26, the petition, since we're covering it up above?
Because we've already passed it. Why do I need to pass it twice? I only need to pass it once.
It's also Article Number 14 or something.
Yeah, you already passed it.
Right, yeah, but so why would we even...
Well, the petitioner put it on, so it has to go on.
Oh, so it has to be on.
It has to be on. And the board said, "We will put it on ourselves," but...
Right.
You cannot withdraw a petition article, because...
You can't take it off. Got it. Sorry, you've told me that three times tonight.
If you file a petition article and say, "I want to withdraw it," you're supposed to go and get the signature of everybody who signed the petition to say they want to withdraw, because the fact that you want to withdraw it doesn't mean I want to withdraw it and I signed the petition.
Got it. That makes sense.
Great. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the, the consent and the postponement agendas?
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the proposed consent agenda. Should we do two? Two motions?
We do it together, I think.
Okay. As well as the consent postponement agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
Second by Ms. Connelly. Can we open it up to questions?
Q and A session has started.
Does anyone have any questions on the consent or postponement agenda? Hit star six. Seeing none, we'll end that. All in favor?
Q and A session is over.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous, five to zero.
One question. I assume we'll do the signing of the warrant next meeting?
Yeah.
The articles?
I mean, the articles, sorry. Yeah.
So we already did it, but Andrew will...
Right, we should...
We'll go over it again and see if you want to do some Ashans, or we can, whatever you feel comfortable with. It's a short notice. Okay, let's approve the minutes, and then we'll do the reorg.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on June 9, 2020.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. One extension.
Yep.
Okay. Now, we're going to have a, the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Every year after the election, we reorganize, and I will accept a motion to appoint a new chairman of the board.
Point of order.
Yes.
May I just have a discussion for a minute?
Yes.
I want to say thank you for being the chair for the last year. I think you did a great job, and just want to take the opportunity, before we do this really fast, because I know we have to get out of here, and appreciate all the time you give, and, and you're always respectful to everybody in here, so you did a great job, you're a good leader, and just want to say thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Maura. Very nice.
It's good.
Couldn't do it alone.
We could certainly quickly give you our thanks for serving...
Illiards, I hope it's just not the bad.
That would be a bummer.[1637.82]